Good evening. Tonight is Monday, January 5th, and I'd like to welcome you to the first city council meeting of the new year in 2015. In the absence of Councilmember Kent Butler, I'll be serving as President Pro Tem tonight. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and we do have a quorum with one member absent. Second item of business is disposition of minutes, and these minutes that we do have are for the regular session of city council held December 15th, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I assume move.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Third item of business is communications. We do have two notices that we -- council has received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. One of them is for a change of ownership, it appears, or a change of title from Traglia, from South Court Enterprises to Traglia Corporation on 14 North Court Street. So this is just a change in the title of that particular license. The second one that we have is from Kroger at 919 East State Street, and it says "and the mezzanine." And this is for a new item. It is for a D5. And as I understand, that this license request came from the corporate office of Kroger Company. Mr. Scholl, the manager, indicated this in a conversation. He said the central Kroger headquarters have several stores in Columbus where they have this kind of license, and what it does is enables them to increase the amount of servings. Right now, they're allowed to do three one-ounce servings of wine tasting. So to the best of his knowledge, that's what this new liquor permit is for, and we would have until January 29th to inquire if we have any additional questions. Mayor, do you have any additional information on this?
No, I did talk to Dave Scholl about it, and essentially, he was saying it was coming out of corporate. It's a general, you know, policy. They want to do this whenever possible. Again, they do serve little samples for wine, I believe, and they just want to be able to expand it if need be. As you say, the quantities, they can't charge for it at this point. I don't think they intend to either. I was asking him a little bit more about it, but again, he's, you know, it's coming from down, top-down from his side. I don't think it's really going to be a problem. I said, you know, "Do you track people who drink those things?" And he says, "Yeah, we don't let, have them, little samples, about four max," and it's little, like, teacup-type cups, I guess, shot glasses or something. I don't really know, but I don't anticipate any problem or expansion on this. I can't conceive of them having a bar in Kroger's.
Councilmember Rosner.
Just one question. Does this D5 put us over our quota for the county for number of D5s?
I don't think so, but I don't know. It's just a straight D5, so it's probably under the quota, but I think we've got a few freed up lately. Some of the ones in safekeeping fell out, and that's what you're seeing, that's what's being snapped up.
Okay.
Our quota is 13, but you're right, we had several others. Tode, Caritas, Chipotle.
We've always been over quota, so we will stay over quota. They don't, as far as I know, they never reduce them.
So once you're over quota, you stay over quota?
Yes.
You can't go back.
The conversations I had with them many years ago, that's, that was the status.
Okay.
And a lot of them fall out of the quota system now, too. A lot of the, some of the D5s with the, was it suffix, you know, AX, H, and I, and things like that. I mean, they've, they've kind of moved these things around to make it easier.
On the same vein, I just have a question if we have heard from State Liquor Control on the requests that we asked for the hearing on.
I haven't heard one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other communications from council members?
No.
Reports and communications from other elected officials, then? Mayor Wile?
Well, I thought somebody would cover the ribbon-cutting Wednesday, 1:00. Is that your jurisdiction there?
I can do that, yes. We will have the ribbon-cutting for the Mill Street South Loop opening. I'm sure everyone has been watching the construction. So it's scheduled for 1:00 there at the Mill Street area. Now, I think people need to pay attention because the weather may, who knows?
It may be a quick ribbon-cutting.
It may be a very quick ribbon-cutting. That's correct. That's correct.
Was that 1:00 or 1:15?
1:15, I think it is.
1:15, I think it is.
I was told to be there at 1:00, so.
Yeah. If you get there at 1:00, that means it'll really happen at 1:15. Other communications I have, I just want to mention a few things in passing. One, let's see. Most of the people should have, in the county and the city, should have received now the opt-out letter from AEP Energy. So you know, the deadline's moving forward on that, so if you, if you think you can make a better bargain, go with that. I would also mention in passing that there is going to be tomorrow, barring, you know, major snow catastrophes, Tuesday, let's see, January 6th, at 2:30 PM, of Lenis Memorial Hospital, room 8 in the basement. The PUCO is having a, hosting an energy presentation. They talk, they're talking about electrical aggregation as well, and energy choice. This is, I forget the woman's name, I think it's Erin McLaughlin or something like that. She worked with the PUCO, and she's, her job is to put it out there saying you have choices. It'd be a good baseline. It's not really associated with us because we're doing the general aggregation opt-out, but she'd be there to answer questions on what this means in terms of electrical generation or not. And again, that was put out by the PCO, and you can always go to their site, energychoisohio.gov. I say barring storms. We do have a winter warning, I think, advisory going on, so we expect 1 to 3 inches or 1 to 4 inches, depending on who you've talked to. We have the plows ready at that point. I would mention that we, by law, if your sidewalks are snow-covered four hours after daylight or after the snow stops falling, you're supposed to clear your sidewalks. So be aware of that. Let's see, the other one, let's see. Also be aware of the fact that the start of the new year, the water rates went up 5%. You had announcement in November about that. Likewise, the fines for garbage, unsightly garbage cans, not out of sight because that's going to affect the June, but the trash and rubbish fines went up from 20 to 50 and extended up there. That went into effect as well. Let's see, I think that covers most of, oh, Christmas tree pickups occurring, so if you've got your Christmas trees to discard, just, I think we're picking it up at, what, every Tuesday and Fridays. You can call the yard waste pickup number at 592-3343. It's a free pickup, although some people just, there are people who are out there who like to give them to goats, so if your Christmas tree disappears before then, it's probably somebody who wanted to use compost.
Mayor Wile, a quick question. Is it my understanding that you need to call the city office, that 592-3343, if you want your tree picked up?
Yes.
Okay. So I know some people have set their things out at the curb thinking that the pickup's going to be automatic like the trash, but it's not, so you do need to make the special call.
Often they will, if they're driving by and they see it, they'll, they'll claim it. And again, they're, they concentrate on Tuesdays and Fridays, so you can have it out there. If you just park it out there, it's going to sit there for a few days as a result. And again, you know, I think some of them go to Lake Snowden for fill. I think I'm told other ones get ground up for mulch, so they get put to a secondary use as a Christmas tree. I think that covers everything I have to, in terms of announcements. I'm sure I've missed something or other, but I want to keep it short.
I wanted to ask a question about aggregation, since you've mentioned that.
Yes.
Is there going to be a public meeting prior to the opt-out that?
We've had several meetings, but I don't think there's going to be another public meeting on that at this point.
And so what is the final day, so people have an understanding?
I think when I read my letter, it was the 21st of January. I think that's when it shuts down. You'll have to look at the letter that you received. You should have received one saying AEP Energy, and it will give you the rate that we're bargaining at, and then it will give you the, it has a little slip of paper that you mail back in.
If you want to opt-out.
If you want to opt-out. Again, this went on the ballot, which means you have to actively participate to get it, to get out of the system there. And again, you can always go and compare it to what's out there right now by going to the PUCO site and scrolling down. They basically have everything in this, you know, you say, "I am right now serving, served by AEP," and you can click on that, it'll give you all the options, in terms of, everything from the rates, how long, you can fix the rate, whether it's variable or fixed, renewable or not, termination fees are in some of them, some of them aren't. So you have a choice on that. And again, that, that change is almost weekly, I believe, depending on what the energy, you know, costs are. But again, if you want to go to that meeting, the 6th, and learn a little bit more, they will do a presentation on that, on the Basics 101. Or you can go to the Consumer Council website, too, because they have things, they have spreadsheets, or rather, information sheets, FAQs on electric aggregation as well. So you've got the PUCO and the Consumer Council, Ohio Consumer Council. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I just felt like the community just needed it, so January 21st.
I think that's what it is. I think that's what it said on mine, but I'd have to go back and track. Again, I didn't really read it closely because I have no plans to opt-out, so I guess I should have gone through and made sure everything's, you know, all the i's are dotted, but we haven't had, SOPEX had a meeting, I think, about a week or two ago. We'll probably schedule a few more, but public hearing-wise, you can always contact Roger Wilkins. I think we have his site on there. If it's not on the county website, it's on our city website as well. He would answer the question. He's our contact point at this point. We've kind of jobbed it out for that. I think they were on Studio B earlier today, too, so you could probably find that by streaming at WUB. There is a plethora of information. I did ask a little bit about where we are with our consultant for the pool. There will be a series of, I believe they're planning to do a public hearing sometime soon on that, too, a public meeting on that, to have that discussion, but that's, as far as I know, the contract has yet to be inked at this point. Any other questions?
I just wanted to follow up on the snow removal, something that the Commission on Disabilities has been doing a lot of work on, is looking into snow removal, different models that different cities are using. And what's kind of interesting is that Cincinnati has this Be a Good Neighbor program that's going on right now, and I just mentioned that, in that a lot of our students are not back from being away, still on break, and we have a lot of citizens who are probably, given that timeframe, still not back, so now's a good opportunity to be a good neighbor, and if you know your neighbor's not around, to help shovel that sidewalk, to make sure that it is ADA accessible.
And given the temperature, it'll probably be more powdery than actually solid. Best thing to do is to get it off the sidewalk before it gets stamped down. You know, I don't have any sidewalks. I guess I could ask for a show of hand, how many people have sidewalks, but I know Second Street used to be regularly done by Mr. Landis there. He used to drive up and down and cover his whole section there, which was quite a chore, but he had a nice riding lawnmower with all that, all the toys and tools. But you're right, yeah, they do have a Be a Good Neighbor program on that. In fact, I did have a flyer for that, too.
And I'd like to point out, this also applies to businesses who have to keep their sidewalks clear. I know that people come to me with issues on East State Street. Some of the businesses down there tend to shovel their driveways and kind of overlap the sidewalks, which makes it very difficult for people now that we have bus system that, you know, is going up and down East State Street more. More people are riding the bus, so they really do need access to those sidewalks.
Yes, and the section of code there is 12.9, 9.12.19, removal of snow and ice. So you can always go to our city website, look at code, and find out what needs to be done.
Well, thanks for all the information. Before we head on to the Law Director's report, he has one tonight, we'd like to welcome the scout troop. We occasionally have guests here, and we're glad to see you here. You're probably working on one of your badges, and if I'm remembering my biographical information, I think our Law Director Lang was a scout, so.
I've had to sit through these meetings for quite some time now.
Well, introduce the law director, he has a report.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to give council a brief update this evening on the goings-on of the Law Director's office and on the state of the city's legal affairs generally. The revised code states that this should be done at the first January meeting of every year, and so for the seventh and final time, I will give you this brief report. The Law Director under Ohio law is charged with the duty of being the General Counsel for the city. This includes representing and providing legal services to city officials, to city council, and to boards and commissions as needed. The Law Director is also the prosecutor of the municipal court, and in, like, in, as in, like, most, as in most cities of our size throughout the state of Ohio, that responsibility primarily falls to a staff of prosecutors. In our case, Chief Prosecutor Lisa Eliason and her two assistants, Tracy Meek and James Stanley. A lot of folks don't realize that the Law Director's office in Athens actually has county-wide jurisdiction, so in misdemeanor cases, we handle not only the offenses that are committed within the city of Athens, but also in the unincorporated portions of Athens County. Our office has also traditionally been involved in negotiating most of the city's collective bargaining agreements. Over the past seven years, both myself and Ms. Eliason have served on various bargaining teams when contracts come up for renegotiations. Our office's staff needs, I would, in my opinion, are being appropriately met at the current time. We have a staff of, again, three full-time prosecuting attorneys, as well as one full-time staff attorney and two full-time legal secretaries. We also have a part-time internship that we have filled from time to time, although for about the last six months, or actually, it's a little more than that, that internship has gone unfilled. And budget-wise, I would say that council has continued to meet our office's budget needs, certainly every year that I've been here, and we've been able to return, at the end of our budget year, every year, we've been able to return a substantial amount of money back into the general fund, and I'm certainly pleased to report that 2014 was no exception. Also pleased to report that due, in large part, I would determine to be because of a proactive approach that has traditionally been taken by Mayor Wile and by his administration, as well as by folks on council, our volume of civil litigation, so that basically means the number of people that are suing the city, has remained at a very low point relative to where we've sometimes been in the past. We currently have no cases, zero cases, pending in federal court. This is important because oftentimes, federal cases tend to be your more substantial, more expensive, more time-consuming sorts of cases, and so we currently have no cases pending there. And of the cases that we currently have pending in state courts, most derive from things that I would say are somewhat routine in nature. So these are the folks that are appealing a ruling of the Board of Zoning Appeals, just because they disagree with the determination they had made, or with the Planning Commission. We also have one case involving an alleged infrastructure failure, which is a water line break from several years ago, and one current case which involves a dispute over who is, which party is responsible for a misplaced storm sewer line. So reasonably, you know, routine sorts of things. Don't mistake a low volume of litigation with a low volume of work, because we've certainly never been busier in my office, and I never know, when I'd come into office initially, you know, I thought that an important focus was going to be on preventing litigation for the city, and I'm, both because that can be, again, an expensive endeavor for, for the city, and by extension, by, for the taxpayer, and it also takes valuable time away from city officials who should be focusing on their public responsibilities and not having to worry about sitting down for a deposition or having to prepare testimony for a court case. And also, litigation oftentimes tends to leave parties feeling angry at the end of it, and unsatisfied, sometimes even, even for the victor. It's just not a terribly satisfying experience for most people that get a chance to experience that, and so I remember my earliest days, in fact, I think in the first week, I'd sat down with Mayor Wile, and we had talked about some things that we could do to both deal with our caseload, which existed at the time, but also talk about ways in which we could reduce that caseload over time. And so over the four years that followed that, in the mayor's first term, our number of pending cases went down every single year, and then it bottomed out at about, for about the last three years, we've been at about three to five cases pending at any given time, which is, again, a very, a very healthy number to have. I think the biggest single reason for that is frankly, communication. I think that, you know, when you get that angry letter, or you get word from a member of council that a resident is upset about something or having a problem, you know, you don't wait until a lawsuit is filed six months later before calling the Law Director's office, and that's something that both Mayor Wile and his administration have been fantastic at. I work routinely with not only the mayor, but with Paula Mosley, with Chief Pyle, Andy Stone, John Paskey, and so again, their proactive approach, I think, has really played into, or has been a chief cause of these, these low levels of litigation that we've been experiencing. Now, it doesn't work every time. Sometimes disagreements are going to exist, and that can't be worked out, and that's what we have a court system for. But as I prepare to leave this office, I think that this council and that, and that the citizens of this city should take justifiable pride in the fact that this administration has largely avoided being involved in litigation with its residents, and I think that's a good thing for everybody. So are there any questions? Okay. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to thank you for all your service and being here, week in, week out, for our council meetings, and accessible, and the staff accessible to answer our questions. I really do believe, I agree with you, that that's helped a lot. And scouts and, and audience, for your background information, Law Director Lang is talking of, speaking of leaving, and he's going to be taking a newly-elected position as judge in the Court of Common Pleas here in our community, so it's kind of a bittersweet sending off to you and a thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to point out, it is, it's a lot of his office, because when I do get a suit coming at me, I kind of deal like it's a hot potato, so I kind of like throw it at him. But again, communication usually helps a lot, before people get their backs up on and start throwing lawyers at us, which is good. Thanks for your work.
Next on our agenda is a one-reading resolution, and I might give a little bit of explanation for the people in our audience tonight. At a regular council session, we have readings of ordinances, and when they are typical kind of ordinance, they come through and have three readings. And since we meet every other week for our regular sessions, that can sometimes take six weeks. A lot of that was concluded at the end of the year, back in December, just before the holidays, where we were closing up and approving the budget that's going to be used for our next operating year, approving contracts for renewals of union, union contracts for our police, and other, other ordinances. So tonight is a little bit unusually short meeting. We do have this one resolution, and I might just offer, as an aside, if the scouts have any questions afterwards, I'm sure we'd be willing to answer any kinds of questions you might have about what a council meeting's like or anything, so. This one reading resolution is R-0115, and it's a resolution expressing the appreciation of the City of Athens, Ohio, to Jim Sands for his public service. It's going to be introduced by all council members, and we have requested that our Clerk of Counsel, Deborah Walker, who's worked with Jim Sands for many years, read the, read the resolution for us, because she probably, more than any of us up here, knows him and all the work he's done, so.
Thank you, Chris. It's my pleasure to have served alongside Jim for just short of 20 years. And the resolution that we're presenting him this evening with states, whereas Jim Sands is a lifelong Athenian and United States veteran, and whereas Jim Sands has served the City of Athens, Ohio with distinction since 1998, eight terms as an at-large council member, and as president of council since 2012, and whereas Jim Sands, as a member of council, served as chair of the following committees, University and Safety Services, Planning and Development, Finance and Personnel, and Community Issues, and as a member of Arts and Recreation, City Services, Environment, Transportation, and Utilities. And whereas Jim Sands mentored many new council members during his 17 years on council, and whereas Jim Sands brought insight and opinions from the business sector, and his calm demeanor was effective when dealing with both community and Ohio University issues, and whereas Jim Sands always sought solutions to problems through rational discourse, collaboration, and compromise, and whereas, as city council, President Jim Sands always ensured that the council was open and welcoming to visitors attending meetings, educating and informing them of city council protocol, and whereas Jim Sands was instrumental in the lighting of the city hall cupola, and whereas this council wishes him well as he embarks on a new stage of his life. The City of Athens does hereby express its appreciation to Jim Sands for his faithful and distinguished service to the city as president of council and as an at-large council member, and we will be presenting a certified copy of this resolution to him. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I assume.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. And would any members of council like to add any comments about the resolution or the mayor?
Again, I've been sitting here for quite some time in the audience, since, I think, '92 or '93. I always found him to be very balanced in his, in his discourse, asking astute questions. He's been working with us as president of council, as liaison for the university, sitting in on many of those activities. I miss his presence in one sense, because he did give us the long view. He actually, also, as a, as you say, a native, gave us the Athenian view and the business view at the same time. He had put a lot of energy into, to public service, and you know as well as I, it'll take everything you can give it, and he was willing to do that. As I said, I wish he was still here, but he's got, as I say, he's got things he has to deal with.
Councilmember Patterson?
I would just like to add how much I certainly appreciated Jim as president, as someone I could go to, as I remember his first term, where there's so many questions, you know so little, and after your second term, you still know so little. However, Jim was that resource, and so always open and willing to help you out, answer your questions for you, figure out protocol, tell you what the committees, because a lot of our work is committee work, and tell us what the committees really are doing, and what they've been doing, where they've come from. There's a lot of history in Jim, so he's, I know I'm going to miss him.
Yeah.
Mayor Wile?
And, and when he, when he was trying to critique you, or guide you a little bit, he did it kindly, constructively, and with a sense of humor. Clearly, I mean, you know, sometimes it's like, okay, I know what he's saying there, and I'm glad he's telling me that way, rather than beating me over the head with something. So easy.
Well, I can't think of any other, any better way to bring in 2015 than to, to honor Jim Sands for his service to city council. And so, Jim, we're thinking of you. You've served as an excellent model for us, and we'll continue to do so, so we'll miss The next agenda item.
Vote.
Oh, we need to vote.
Yes.
Please. All those in favor of approving Resolution 0115, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. And the resolution is passed. We have announcements and other business. The first one being confirmation of the mayor's appointment of a member to the Recreation Advisory Board, and I believe Councilmember Patterson, we have that information.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to have Mark Ferguson become a member of the Arts Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board.
And do we have a little bit of biographical information, Mayor Wile?
Basically, he's Executive Director of Campus Recreation. He started in November 20, 2013. He comes from other university settings. He was recommended, actually, brought forward by Rick Campatelli. I'm trying to fill that board because the next task, of course, is putting the pool together, and the construction, and the money that we'll have to lay there. The conversation shows that he's got a balance on what's going on. He's a citizen of the city. He's served, let's see, it says, his history goes from Clemson University. He served there, as well as, let's see, got his bachelor's degree from Brown University, and as I say, he's basically, he's an Ohio native as well. Again, he's going to balance out what I need to have. He's, works at the Pink Center at this point, so he's involved, at least in the recreation side, as well as, you know, all the aspects that we need. Again, this will, this will fill up the complement for the advisory board at this point.
His, his experience in recreation is quite extensive. 12 years at Clemson as the director of, recreational director at Clemson University, and then, as the mayor indicated, he's been here since November 2013, serving that same capacity at Pink.
And the hope is, as we develop our pool, that we have the, we look in what we want to see. to see in a pool, have to complement what is else, what else is in the city, which includes the university side. They're not intended to, to compete with each other, but more like to complement each other. So the communication, it's another avenue of communication with the university, and I always look for that aspect as well. We've had, you know, I think it'll be balanced, so we'll give it a shot.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approving the confirmation of Mark Ferguson to the Recreation Advisory Board. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? The like sign. Okay, he's been confirmed. We also need to have a motion to approve the November and December financial statements that were provided to us on a timely basis by the auditor. We just aren't always as quick to approve them, but we have received them, we've reviewed them, and we now need to have a motion to approve.
I still move.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the November and December financial reports. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Committee meetings for next week, I would like to find out who of the council members, so planning and development, okay. Finance, I think.
Finance and personnel, yes.
Finance and personnel, we will need. And do we need to know about having a meeting for transportation?
We'll go ahead and say so if we don't.
Okay. And we do have a time limit that we need to know by tomorrow, if we're going to have a committee meeting, so that we can publish the agenda. We're on a little bit shorter timetable this week.
I thought we were going to have a presentation, wasn't it?
We will for finance and personnel, or maybe committee of the whole from Burgess and Nybel about their parking garage repairs.
And I thought the Tourism Bureau was going to come, too.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'd like to schedule a meeting with the auditor. Unfortunately, she's not here, but with the Finance and Personnel Committee, I'd like to try for 3:00 on Thursday.
Okay.
Mostly because, you probably haven't checked your mailbox, but I received an email from Audit to Heck, saying there are some things that need to be modified on the appropriation ordinance, I believe. It sounds like, it sounds like she found some warts, so I need to deal with it, you know.
It's part of the budget process.
Yes.
I'm glad that she's helping us with that to move through it. Okay, any other committees? We always have on our regular council meeting agendas an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak before council tonight? If not, we'll move to the last item on our agenda, which is adjournment. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And we are adjourned at 7:32.